Just in case anyone didn't hear, I'll introduce the school, I'll open their meeting and introduce the school committee and then throw it off to everybody around the table to kind of introduce the members there, open a meeting if you have to, and then we'll stand up for the pledge, if that works. Okay? All right? Good. I'd like to call the meeting of the Narragansett Regional School Committee to order. I'm Margaret Hughes, Chair of the School Committee. With the school committee tonight, we have Hank Mason, Jeffrey Marks, Vicki Chartier, Deb Cosell, Rand Trifilo, and Deb Rubashaw, and I'll pass it off to the next board representative.
Jeffrey Bennett, Chairman of the Templeton Advisory Committee.
I'll call the Templeton Board of Select meeting to order. This is a business meeting, not, since we only don't have a quorum. And myself, I'm John Capless, the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, and I got Diane Hillbrook alongside me, along with the Town Administrator, Mr. Carter Tenzini.
And I'm John Telepsia, Chairman of Phillipsden Board of Selectmen, and we actually do have a quorum, so we'll call our meeting to order.
And with you is...
Oh. Oh.
How soon they forget.
And you can grant.
Oh, and with us tonight is Kevin Flank.
Tom Speck, Chairman of the Phillipsden Finance Committee. We don't have a quorum, so I will not be calling the meeting to order.
Right. With that, I'd like to do the Pledge of Allegiance, if everyone would stand.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So tonight is the first of meeting with multiple boards, with the Town of Templeton and Phillipsden and the Narragansett Regional School Committee. With the school committee tonight, I just want to introduce Dr. Kazvett, Superintendent, Mrs. Geist, who's the Business Manager, Mrs. Varney, our Administrative Assistant, who will take copious notes for everybody. We had talked last year, we had gotten together later in the budget process and decided that we really needed to come together as the towns and the schools to engage in a conversation, to begin talking about the budget, the budget process, how we could better work together so that at the end of the day, when the school committee sits down to certify, there's no surprises as to what our number might be, there's no surprises from the town's perspective of what funds you may have available for the school to use, that we can really be partners in this from the beginning, which is why we're here today, is to just do more of a status check of where we are after last year into fiscal year 19, right into fiscal year 19, and then kick off a discussion about fiscal year 20 and where we're going, let you know some of the thoughts the school committee has, and how we'll be handling the budget process, and also some of the things that we're looking to do with our budget. So with that said, I will turn it over to Dr. Kazvett, deer in the headlights, to just kind of give a state of the state for fiscal year 19, so current year finances, what the school is looking like.
So, as we report out at every school committee meeting, you know, financially, we're stable. We have had no financial surprises, and again, we're going along as budgeted, quite frankly, and we hope to keep that trend going for the remainder of this school year. In terms of what we've done, when looking ahead to FY '20, we began the process, I would say, almost in August, and there's a lot going on, as you know, we have a new school, and we're trying to figure out exactly what the staffing will be, and taking those from Templeton Center and Ballinville Elementary School in the fifth grade, and then putting together, looking at that, and then looking at the other schools to see, did those moves create any, what we're calling, natural openings, meaning not folks that maybe the building principals would like to have, or maybe need, these are just the openings that the reconfiguration would naturally cause. And we've done, we have completed at least its first iteration of what the schedule looked like at Templeton Center, at the new Templeton Center, we're now working on what the new schedule looks like at the middle school, and that's just basically in theory at this point in time. So, we also have, of course, we know what the salaries are, of course, we're currently in negotiations with both unions right now, as we speak, so we'll have firmer numbers on what, if any, effect that will have on FY '20 and beyond. So, from our perspective, we're far, we are certainly a lot farther along than we'd be in October almost at any year.
I'll throw it out to the towns of Templeton and Phillipsden, if you either want to comment on current state of the state, if you will, state of the municipality, if you will, from finances, so we can kind of gauge what we're looking at going into next year, and then from there, I'll talk about what the committee has decided we want to do for budgeting this year, but I don't know if you have any comments or anything to offer.
Well, just to report that we're only three months in, as you are, but so far, we're on track in terms of our budget, with two exceptions, one being the emergency that we had out at the Stone Bridge Road, and we thank Phillipsden for their assistance on that, but that burnt about $20,000 by itself in 72 hours, and the upcoming study of what to do long range, and secondly, damage from those heavy rains of about three weeks or so ago, we lost part of a road, and that'll cost us about $30,000. We'll deal with those internally or in some other fashion. We got our first peak at health insurance, so we're probably going to be in the seven and a half percent plus or minus range at this point. We've got about three months left in terms of our 24-month, as you know, they take 24 months of experience to give you that experience rating, so we have three more months to go. We'll hope everybody's healthy. And at this point, that's really about all that we do have on the Fall Town Meeting, the $417,000 plus or minus in the school debt that we missed at the annual Town Meeting. Our Fall Town Meeting is this coming Thursday.
Thank you. Phillipsden?
Well, we're on track, I mean, we don't have any formal or hard numbers on anything yet, we have a management meeting tomorrow night, we might know more after that, but...
No surprises.
Not that we know of.
Yeah, we have, you know, we have an ongoing study on the rehabilitation of the existing school building, focusing, started focusing originally on the roof, and has now looked at a number of other things that also want to be corrected, it's like a lot of things, once you start looking, you find more things. I would say that, like Templeton, we've had quite a bit of damage from the storms recently too, and one of the things that the Public Works Director and I have noticed is that a lot of the damage is related to culverts or stream crossings on several key roads in town that are all on one stream, and so, and these are the roads that connect north and southern parts of town. So, this related damage, every time we get the storm flooding, causes difficulties for our emergency responders to get from one side, from the northern side of town to the southern side, without having to go a long detour through Templeton, no longer across Stone Bridge, or through Petersham. So that's a concern to us, and we're trying to find some resources to address that as quickly as we can.
Thank you. Thank you. So, one of the changes that the school committee is making in this current fiscal year budgeting cycle is, in the past, we've had a subcommittee that we've put together to work on the budget. After some deliberation among the committee as a whole, it was felt that we would be better served to run our finance meetings, rather than as a subcommittee, but do a finance committee of the whole. So, we will be engaging in full-board discussions on the budget this year, rather than the subcommittee process. In the past, we've always asked for and have truly appreciated the partnering that we get from the towns with the representative to come to our meetings, and we'd like that to continue. So even though it's not the same subcommittee anymore, it'll be the committee of the whole, we really would like to get representation, advisory boards, select board, Phillipsden Select Board, FinCom, you know, whoever the boards want to designate, we would certainly appreciate the contributions to sit and listen to us, offer valuable insight, which has definitely, I know, helped me in the past, is when I've been on the subcommittees, and allow us to develop a budget, and then to be able to bring back some of that information as we're moving along to your respective boards, which I think we'll continue that communication, keeping it open for dialogue. With that being said, we have a schedule of meetings, so on the agenda, what you'll see is a listing of meetings that we will be holding. What we had decided to do is capitalize on the fact that we meet monthly for our school committee meetings at 6 o'clock. We will begin in November, meeting at 5 o'clock for an hour on the budget, so that will be prior to every school committee meeting. Additionally, we have a meeting, a kind of kickoff meeting scheduled for the 29th, and depending on what we come out of this meeting, as a school committee, if we feel that we don't need to meet on the 29th, we may not meet till November, but we'll decide that at our regular meeting on Wednesday, but that would be the first meeting, if we don't put that one off. And what we had also done, based upon the feedback that we received last year from the towns, asking for the numbers earlier, so that we can get you our information, we have moved our budget hearing and voting meetings earlier in the month of March, so that if this schedule holds true, we would be doing our first preliminary budget hearing on March 6th, and then on the 13th, we will do our second budget hearing and vote on the budget. So you will have a certified number from the school district on March 13th with our budget, and I think that fell in line with what you were looking for us to do.
It did, so if I might just say, it looks, if I'm reading this correctly, that by 2/13, you'll basically have the budget, you're thinking of taking the public hearing?
That should, yeah, we left ourselves some weeks, because again, with the governor, I believe he has, we have to the end of January this year, because it's an election year.
He gets 15 extra days in the election.
Yeah, so we kind of left those weeks, if we need to meet additional, you know, we will schedule those if we feel we need to, but that gave us some time to work with whatever numbers were then laid out in the governor's budget, so.
From my perspective, this looks substantially improved in the work.
FY '20 budget outlook, I know that Dr. Kazvett has already spoken to what it looks like with the reorganization of the district next year, with that wonderful new school being built, bringing fifth grade back, and identifying any needs that arise just from the reconfiguration alone. We also have other things that I know are on our plate from last year, we were talking earlier, I said, you know, it's kind of like, well, when we met here last, we had talked about some of the needs that we had, and how we were going to fund those, and at the end of last year, we had agreed to utilize some school choice funds that were current year funds, rather than prior year, to fund some of the deficit we had, so that we could assist the Town of Templeton in meeting the budget number. So, we know right off the bat that there are certain positions and expenses that we have taken out of school choice, that we are going to need to fund. So one of the things that we wanted to just discuss tonight is to, you know, make everyone aware of, that was the discussion that we had had, and I apologize, I don't remember the exact number, and I'm sure Mrs. Geist will probably know it off the top of her head. It's 100 and...
Which, you mean the...
Well, we have the elementary assistant principal is in school choice, is one of them.
Right, all of those, yeah.
Yeah.
It's about 130, 117, I forget the exact number.
Yeah, because there's a couple teachers, the extra fifth and sixth are in there as well.
So, one of the things that we just wanted to identify right up front is that we really need to move ongoing expenses out of our school choice and revolving funds and into our baseline budget. So the school, you know, when the budget process happens, I know that we put everything into the general fund, to see, well, what do we need, and then figure out how to compensate, but those are definitely things that we need to move out and make sure that we have ongoing positions, et cetera, in our baseline budget. I don't know if there's other, what else was in there?
Well, we have a big portion of our health insurance that's in there, too.
Yep. So, and again, you know, we understand the needs of the towns and trying to be fiscally responsible, so, you know, we'll definitely work with that, but we know that we have expenses that we have to grow. I don't, it'll be interesting to see, I mean, if everyone has been listening to the revenue reports, that revenues are up at the state level, we haven't seen them translate into Chapter 70 funds for the schools, so we'll see if that happens, there's a lot of things that need to happen, we just haven't seen the results of a lot of these discussions, and don't know if we'll actually see the benefit of some of the changes they make. So, is there anything that you wanted to add to FY '20?
No, I think that, so certainly those positions, I think that what we want to make sure of, with these natural openings occur because of the reconfiguration, that'll also play into that as well. Again, these will be, these will not be wishes, you know, boy, we'd like, we sure could use a, this will be literally holes that the reconfiguration has created, and we knew that was going to happen, we didn't know exactly where it would all fall out, exactly where, but we're getting close to that answer, and we have preliminary answers right now, as a matter of fact, but we want to vet a few things out before we go ahead and start laying that out. But that is, at this point, those, the two major items would be the FY '19, the current FY positions that currently reside in the school choice, and of course, the positions that will be the natural openings.
Any comments, please?
But this isn't new information. When that budget was balanced or approved last year, the town was fully aware that we were doing it, taking positions now and using this year's money to pay it from school choice. So that's not new. I mean, it may be refreshing to hear it, but when it happened last year, there was a understanding that that would have to be worked on for this, or at least, that's what I understood when it was done, because it was very tentative, in my opinion, with a vote on a budget that uses money to fund positions now, that would be next year, and you talked about the fact that we would work together on that. Yeah, I see. Yes.
I think we all understood how you got to your bottom line. The challenge for us is whenever your ask is more than all of our new revenue, or your ask is more than the reflective proportion that you are of our budget, it is anywhere from difficult to impossible. And we would just reinforce that again this year, you've heard it last year, I'm sure you've heard it many times before I got here, that's the challenge that we face on our side. We have three unions coming up, we understand the challenges you face, we'll be interested in the cost of opening the new school, and we'll go forward from there, I think is all we can say right now.
Phillipsden have anything to add? I'm just about budgeting for next year and with the school.
Nothing new, I mean, these things happen all the time, we never have enough money, but you have to work and see what you can, how you can come up with that.
What I will say, and I certainly, and I hear the plight of Town Templeton, is it does look like your contribution level has settled now, that you're not under effort, you're where you should be, and there is some discussion at the state level, some interest groups trying to look at shifting a percent of local contribution versus the state fund, so there's a lot of things at play, I don't see them happening in time for this next budget cycle, unfortunately, but perhaps in the future, there may be some relief for districts like ourselves, because we're not the only one who struggle with the locals, towns, having to contribute so much towards the school, and it hurts everyone, and it makes it difficult for making decisions, so hopefully, at some point, there'll be some shifts in how the contributions are figured, and maybe the foundation budget formula, too.
I know, but this is the same place we were in last year, when we sat here in October, was the same thing, maybe there'll be money, maybe there'll be this, and then we get down to the end, and the school department last year took the money to put it, to put the budget over. It will show whether that was a wise decision, but what I was hoping to hear tonight was that the school was prominent in those three unions that are coming up, that the school was prominent in understanding that they needed more money.
I mean, I think the Board of Selectmen and the town understand the school district needs more money. The townspeople were understanding last year, when they took a step of increasing their taxes by 70 cents, 75 cents, roughly, per thousand, with a $470,000 over by, so I think we're all aware of what needs to happen from our side, but we just want to reaffirm the basic, that whenever the school district needs all, or more, or substantially all of our monies, it's a challenge, and so how we get through that challenge over the coming number of months, we're going to have to see. I don't think anybody's saying we don't want to work together to meet the challenge. At least I haven't heard that.
No, no. And having these other meetings, I think, is fantastic. Having representatives from your partners in the different towns, I think, is great, but we also know the challenges of the school. You know, last year, you guys had over a $22 million budget, so I mean, and I know this year, with projections, and I don't want to speak out numbers, but I mean, I don't know what it's going to cost to run the new school as far as power, water, and sewer, I don't know what the other ancillary stuff's going to be, projections are going to be, but based on East Templeton and Templeton Center, before those closed, I can probably foresee what they're going to be, so I mean, you guys are going to be looking for a significant increase in dollars, I can tell you that. What it's going to be, I don't know, but it's not going to be a couple hundred thousand, I can tell you that. So where that money's going to come from, I mean, if we only get a couple hundred thousand dollars in new growth, you know, how are we going to offset, you know, making a $7 million or $8 million contribution to the school, when we only have a $60 million a year budget? So that's based on the growth, and that's fact, I mean, that's not like, we're not pulling things out of the air, this is all factual stuff on paper through the Department of Revenue, so, I mean, we're going to put all our cards on the table, just like you guys are going to put your cards on the table, just like Phillipsden's going to put their cards on the table, and we're all going to come out and hopefully come up with an agreement that's going to be satisfactory to, you know, Dr. Kazvett and the school, Regional School District, which again, I keep calling you our partners, because it is, this is a partnership, this is a hand-in-hand partnership, and we all need to, you know, work together, but understand that the balance is of all the worlds, you know, Phillipsden's world, Templeton's, you know, as a world, and then the Narragansett Regional School District, so, but we do get it, we do understand.
Thank you.
And I think we're actually a couple of months earlier this time.
We are, we are, which is great.
I think this conversation last year started in February, if I remember right.
Yeah, it was about February, right?
Yep. And so, you know, as I say, as the disclaimer, it's, when I say it's easy, but it's easier to identify cost, we know that, right? The issue that I think we're all, we all face, is that we may not have the number as early as we need it, in terms of what the state is going to do. You know, I think that that, for me, is always worrisome, I always worry that that number could, you know, you just don't know what the formula's going to do lots of times, and so I think, but I said that last year, and we, you know, I'm sure I'll say it again, but in terms of what it'll cost of one of the district, when I say, yeah, in relative terms, it will be lightning much faster than it ever has been, I think, ever, I don't know, but certainly in the last, say, 10 years, we'll have that number very quickly. What the number is from the state, though, we'll have to wait to the end of, well, hopefully it's not that long, but to the end of March.
January.
I mean, January, sorry, March is my number, sorry, March is budgetized, sorry. January, sorry.
Well, it's nice that we're starting early, and the question will be, you know, where are we at the other end of the meetings? If we can come together?
Yeah, I think we'll probably want to engage in another meeting and invite everyone in, once we get a handle on what our numbers look like, so in a couple of months, maybe three months, just to keep the lines of communication open, make sure there's no surprises out there, you know, if you've got emergency situations, you know, as they come up, and be able to communicate anything that's happening, so that we can keep those lines open, and as we said, having a representative from your groups work with us as we formulate the budget will be very helpful as well, to exchange information back and forth. I know Phillipsden usually, Mr. Speck, is...
Right, and you, and over the years, it's been, like, sometimes it was one or two from the finance, and then a select person.
We're happy to have as many want to come. It's an open meeting, it's a school committee meeting, so if we have to take votes, it's a school committee vote, since we're formulating a budget, we really wouldn't be voting on anything at that point, but it will be an open meeting, and we will look for the public input, which would be all of you as our partners to come in and...
Right, and it, you know, opens our eyes to see what's there and what's needed and what's coming.
Madam Chair, I would say, when we came here, I just spoke, we feel comfortable that by December, we would have the cost, right, what the, we certainly won't have with the state, but we feel by December, we'll have, you know, a pretty good number. Insurance doesn't come out till, you know, February, so, but we could, you know, you can factor in that as well, like everyone else has to, but we feel confident by December, we'll have, you know, we'll have that information.
So we'll probably, maybe in January then, try to convene and kind of get what we have, and engage in some discussions, because I think what I see unfolding for the district is, if it is that we need additional funds and the towns can't come up with the monies through just basic growth and the two and a half levy limit, you know, the big elephant in the room is, you know, potential override, and we want to make sure if it comes to that, that we're all partnered together to make that happen. This, you know, I know the Town of Templeton has worked so hard to put that school up, and we're so close to opening those doors, and to make everything just go smoothly when we open it and budget properly, we don't want to get caught, you know, we've had the discussion of, you know, budgeting for utilities, you know, you don't want to say, oh, well, it's energy efficient, so we, you know, we need to make sure we're realistic, and we don't want any surprises either next year, so, you know, we want to make sure that we're partnered together and all sharing the same story of why these things are important to the community and to our students, and so they succeed, and that's what we're, you know, we're all here for, even if you're not on the school committee, you know, we all want to see the best for our children, and that's what we're about here, so.
And I'm sure you've seen that, you know, Templeton has been doing a lot of great things, and some things that actually, but we are working towards a platform of, you know, financial stability and working towards all that, you know, because again, it's always a work in progress. But what you don't see is the growth that we have as far as, you know, talking about a potential 10th police officer in town, which is going to cost dollars, we're just talking, nothing's in stone, that's not really happening, so don't say it's happening, but we're talking about stuff like that, we're talking, you know, there is a new fire truck coming to town, there's going to be a new ambulance that's going to be needed in the next year, I believe, next year, new cruiser, you know, we got, the highway department is getting, got their first truck, is on the ground already, their second truck should be hopefully sometime in February, is that about right? So, these are trucks that are like, you know, $60,000 you buy at the dealership down the street, you know, these are $250,000, $300,000 vehicles, so, and our rolling stock was deplorable, so I mean, these are things, there's not that we wanted to have, like even Dr. Kazvett, these are things that we want to have, like, I mean, I'd love to have a lot of fun things, but, you know, these are... but, you know, these are things that we need to have in order to operate this town efficiently and effectively and safely at the same time, utilizing our fire service, our police service, you know, and our highway department efficiently to make it safe for everybody. You know, plowing our streets and doing the things that they need to do and so forth and so on. So, there are some things, not just the school, but also the police stations being rebuilt as well, which is looking very well. So, I mean, there are a lot of things that, and a lot of changes that have happened due to this board of selectmen, and this board has been tremendous and supportive of all aspects of the community to make sure everybody gets a little bit of peace here and there to make it work for everybody. And of course, our children are our priority as well. But knowing where the dollars line up, you know, that's going to be, that's where the fund's going to be, you know?
Any other comments or questions? I don't want us to just continue to meet because, you know, we slotted an hour for a meeting. You know, I think at the end of the day, we're all taxpayers, and we all want the best services in all aspects. So, working together, hopefully, we can make that happen, so. Any comments for the school committee before? I would take a motion to adjourn. Okay, anyone else out in the public want to say anything else?
Yeah, I'm going to ask the same question of Dr. Kazivan that Julie Richard asked last year. There's a lot of money that leaves in school choice, and I would like to know how that is broken down. Why? It's not like it's $100,000. It's significant. So, I would like to know if there's a way that we could know, just in general terms. I understand that people have privacy, and they may have their own reasons why people from our community leave to go to other places, and there may be a myriad of reasons, but I wanted to know if there's a way that you could get to us, some kind of report. You had stated that there was a survey that went out, but I asked several parents if they ever got a survey, and their answer to me was no.
The survey that we were speaking, that was my first year. That was the survey that went out to all parents, to the entire community, when I, when I did the...
Obviously, thank you.
I'm sorry?
They had just said they never received any kind of survey, so...
We'll certainly send the survey out. We can send that survey out again. It was the culture survey, is what it was. But I will, I would say to you that we don't know what the outnumber is, but we're 250 kids school choicing in, and I don't know what the number out is, but it's far lower than the number in. That's what we know. I don't want to, I don't want to speculate as to a number. We'll know that December 5th, I think that's when the report comes out. But we, that's a survey, I can send, we can send that out. We have to do it by mail, because I don't have their email, which I think sometimes, which is more difficult to get information back, but we could certainly send that culture survey out again.
I'm just saying that if the elephant in the room is an override, which that is an elephant in this room, because, you know, if, if, if the town's funds, if all of it goes to the school district, and yes, we're doing, this board has done many great things, put together an amazing financial policy where we don't use free cash to lower our tax rate, and we don't use free cash to, you know, use for operational expenses, and we don't use, and that's the first time that's ever happened in the history of this town, in the history of this town. And, you know, if all this money is going out of the district, I'm so happy that all this money is coming in, trust me, and that people want to come to this district because of new school, and again, for a myriad of reasons, but that would be less money in an override. So, I mean, I think it's definitely something that needs to be looked at, and it's a concern to me. And that's my statement on that. And my question?
We'll send it out.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything in common? So, I would take a motion to adjourn. So, do you have a second?
Second.
Do you have a second, school committee, your own favorite?
Hi.
We adjourned, so if anyone else does to adjourn? Thank you, everyone.